Adequate notice for receiving this meeting has been given in accordance with the Public Meeting Act pursuant to public law of 1975. Said notice is advertised in the meeting and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Presentation from Chief Devella honoring two volunteers. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Captain Mike Salt and Lieutenant Cornelius of the Lacy Township Police Department. We do want to welcome our firefighters here tonight and their families. We have been recognizing two firefighters tonight, so I'll follow them up. I had Mark or I had Mark Jr. Please sit up here. So, December fifteenth last year, 2018, about 11:30 in the morning, the police department received a call regarding a vehicle submerged in Hill Farm Lake, part of the Radford. Simultaneously, the parkers were at their home residence, which is a short distance away, and were listening to their scanner. And actually, I heard the call come over the scanner, submerged vehicle in Hill Farm Lake with a trap, meaning there were still occupants inside the vehicle. Without hesitation, both these firefighters responded directly to the scene rather than their respective fire departments. And when they arrived on scene, what they saw was a vehicle approximately fifty yards out into the lake submerged, but not then stolen. Again, without hesitation, without thinking, both of these firefighters jumped into the lake and began going out towards the vehicle. Edward Barker Jr. was able to get the driver, an eighteen-year-old boy, out through the sunroof of the vehicle, eventually on the top of the vehicle, and then got him into the water, at which point he started to lead him toward the shore, met up with his father, and both of them together led this gentleman to the shore. As far as I'm concerned, their actions were extremely heroic. I have to tell you, from what I understand, everybody I talked to a short time later, that vehicle was almost completely submerged, which means if they didn't get there when they did, we don't know what would have happened. You know, I've always said before, and I'll say it again, we can't do what we do, the police department and township. We can't do what we do without volunteers like yourself. So, as Chief of Police, emergency management coordinator, and as myself, Mike Devella, I truly and with passion really appreciate what you all do. So, thank you very much. We do have some pla- pla- plaques for each one of them. Most of these plaques read the same, other than the name. So, presented to Lenoka Harbor firefighter Edward Barker. On December fifteenth, 2018, Fork River firefighter Edward Barker Jr. And Lenoka Harbor firefighter Edward Barker witnessed a motor vehicle crash. They found the driver to be trapped in his vehicle. The two firefighters made a heroic order of rescue, saving the driver. Their quick actions are to be commended, presented by the Lacy Township Police Department by 2019. Again, presented to Fork River firefighter Edward Barker.
What's that? Lynn will share the pictures with me.
He's sitting there with a really good smile and everything.
Well, what do you want to do, sneer?
No.
I don't even know which one you're talking about.
Two people standing like you were meant to be there. It was good.
Number two is postponed.
Yes, number two has been postponed.
Till August fifteenth, when the complainant's attorney is able to be present.
Okay. Number three, request for special events signage, Urban Shack at 111 North Main Street, July thirteenth.
The Urban Shack is looking to have an event this coming Saturday, July thirteenth, at their new location, 111 North Main Street. They, obviously, since it's outside the scope of their zoning permit, because they're going to have things outside in the parking lot, and they also maintained an agreement with the Fork River Presbyterian Church to utilize their parking, and they wanted to put out some signs and stuff for the event. I just need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Number four, request to post signs, Lenoka Harbor Fire Department.
The Lenoka Harbor Fire Department is having a mattress sale on August seventeenth, and they're inquiring to post signs, bed lawn style signs, one week in advance of the event.
Motion on this?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, door-to-door solicitation, Clean Water Act.
This is an annual request from the Clean Water Act Association. They like to go door-to-door canvassing to get people to sign up or donate money to them. Unfortunately, under the statute, they are allowed to do this. They just basically have to notify us. They do it Monday through Friday, four p.m. to nine p.m., and on Saturdays from eleven to six. What we've always asked them to do is be considerate of the changing of the clocks, and of course, the sun setting earlier to, you know, finish up at dusk. Even though we can't mandate it, we ask them to be considerate of that, and they usually are. So, I just need a motion to approve that.
Move it.
Second. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing to add on to this agenda. Anybody else have anything to add on? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're waiting to township meeting. Adequate notice for this seeing... Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice is advertised in the Ashbury Park Press and the meeting and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a momentous hours.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance two nineteen dash eleven, amending chapter two eighty-nine recycling so as to set the fees for disposal of tires.
In ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the township code of the Township of Lacey so as to amend chapter two eighty-nine dash seven entitled Recycling Drop Off Center. This is to change with regards to the disposal of tires from regular motor vehicles versus commercial. We will now charge a two-dollar per tire disposal fee, because we... There's no market out there now for it to be free, and the town is being charged. So, the county is moving forward with the two-dollar per fee, per tire fee. Motion on first reading?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash twelve, amending chapter one seventy-eight fees so as to set the fees for marriage ceremonies performed by the mayor and deputy mayor.
In ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the township code of the Township of Lacey so as to amend chapter one seventy-eight entitled Fees. This is setting the fees and the collection of fees for the... The mayor and deputy mayor are, by law, allowed to perform wedding ceremonies. So, a Lacey resident who would like their ceremony performed by the mayor, deputy mayor, within the township of Lacey pays fifty fees, fifty dollars for the session. If they need to go outside of the township, it's seventy-five dollars. Non-residents, inside the township, it's a hundred. Non-residents, outside of the township, is a hundred and fifty. First reading, motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
No.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty nine, two dash zero one nine dash thirteen, setting salaries for various positions.
In ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is setting the salary for the tax assessor, deputy tax assessor, part-time public safety telecommunicator trainees, and with less than one-year experience, and part-time public safety telecommunicator trainees with more than one-year experience.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading, twenty nineteen dash oh nine, authorizing lease of property with the Pheasant Home, Homeowners Association.
In ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the lease of block ten, twenty-four point thirteen, lot five, to the Pheasant Run Homeowners Association for gardening or recreational purposes pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash fifteen. This contract expired this past May. We are entering into a new lease with them. It is, again, a piece of property that is common area within their association that belongs to the town, that they utilize for gardening, and it will expire in the year 2044. I do not believe I will be here working.
Move it.
Have a second reading. Open the floor, please.
Will you open it up to the public? Is it segregation?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion on this?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number five, second, second reading, twenty nineteen dash ten, creating chapter two forty-seven Outdoor Water Conservation.
In ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, creating chapter two forty-seven entitled Outdoor Landscape Water Conservation Ordinance. This is in accordance with our requirement for our plan implementation agreement for our Lacey Township Plan endorsement application.
Second reading, this up to the public. Does the public have any comment on this this evening?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh three, making various promotions.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing various appointments, promotions, and lateral changes in the CWA clerical unit and the Teamsters Blue Collar Unit for the Township of Lacey pending promotional procedures by the Civil Service Commission. These were the agreed to promotions this year within the two union contracts. We are promoting Crystal Conady, Michelle Szysinski, Christine Demay, Shannon Quinn, Allison Price, Dennis Barlow, Ray Bradmal, and Taylor Riley, and they are effective on Monday, July fifteenth.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number seven, resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh four, appointing the part-time substitute Class Three Officer.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Francesco Bruno as a part-time substitute Class Three Special Law Enforcement Officer. This is a substitute when one of our normal classes will call out sick or need time off. This is all the costs are borne by the Board of Education for this.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh five, appointment of part-time substitute police dispatcher.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Cody Jordan as a part-time public safety telecommunicator for the Township of Lacey Police Department. This is a substitute. It's only when we are running short and we don't have overtime to fill the shift. This is effective as of tomorrow's date.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Number nine, resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh six, authorizing the demotion of an employee.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the removal of the provisional appointment of Christopher Gerisi to the position... From the position of motor broom officer, operator, to the position of truck driver. There was a civil service exam. Mr. Gerisi did not perform in the top three, therefore, he's not eligible to be kept in that position. He ranked number four. So, I have to remove him and put him back to his prior title.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh seven, authorizing the promotion of an employee to motor broom operator.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the promotion of Steven Skrobsky to the position of motor broom operator in the Department of Public Works. And this is based off of the civil service list that we had.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number eleven, resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh eight, consenting to the county's water quality management plan.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, consenting to the proposed Ocean County Water Quality Management Plan Amendment. This is a requirement that all municipalities in Ocean County must either oppose or agree to the water quality management plan for the county wastewater management plan. This is with regards to Lakewood Township and Jackson Township, these changes, and the county has asked us to pass a resolution consenting to the changes.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two oh nine, urging changes to the National Flood Insurance Program.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, urging legislatures to take action to oppose and seek changes to the reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two ten, authorizing the filling of a grant application for twenty-twenty capstan drive improvements with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the capstan drive road improvement project. This is priority number one for our twenty-twenty applications. They are supposed to hopefully announce them early in November of this year. The amount that we're requesting is five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two eleven, authorizing the filling of a grant application for twenty-twenty of Northwest Barnicot Pine Road improvements with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the Northwest Barnicot Pine Streets Road Improvement Project. This would be phase two of this project. This is priority number two. We probably will not get both projects, hopefully just one, but the proposed sum and cost of phase two of this project is one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two one two, placing a lien on the property. The property maintenance issue is block one sixty-five, lot one point zero two.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal to bring cleaning up of the property located at nine oh six Beach Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This lien is the amount of one hundred dollars and thirty cents.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. You thought I was going to hear you. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two thirteen, placing a lien on the property for property maintenance issues for blocks two two six point zero three, lot one.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at twenty-eight Parker's Point Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two one four, placing a lien on the property. The property maintenance issue is block eight two two, lot five.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at ten twelve Laurel Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of one hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-two cents.
Move it.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number eighteen, resolution twenty nineteen dash two one five, placing a lien on the property. The property maintenance issue, property maintenance issues for block eight forty-six, lot fifteen.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at twelve twenty-six Laurel Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of one hundred dollars and thirty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two one six, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two one seven, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with noted abstentions O zero nine seven four, T zero zero three five, U four four nine eight, and U four four nine nine.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes, except...
D?
D, D zero four hundred. Monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of June collected receipts in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents. Road opening permits for the month of June were collected in the amount of four thousand, five hundred dollars and seven cents. Recycling commodity in the amount of six hundred and two dollars for the month of June, and those are all the reports that I have to read. Motion to accept the reports is read?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the township meeting minutes of June twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the caucus meeting minutes of June twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve special meeting caucus minutes of June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Fork River, Fork River Fire Volunteer Fire Company for Sean Spina.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license application for lost dog search and rescue.
Move it.
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
I have two add-ons, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
First is a resolution, and it's a resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing an on-the-bus driver for the Recreation Department. As you know, we are shorthanded on bus drivers for recreation. I wanted to get this on tonight, and the person we're appointing is Jennifer Meehan, and she does have the proper credentials and license.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Next, it's a resolution, Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of interlocal government, interlocal services agreement with the Borough of Tuckerton for tax assessor services. As you know, we just recently hired a new tax assessor. We are going to be sharing that tax assessor one day a week with the Borough of Tuckerton, and they are picking up thirty-five thousand dollars of the salary.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
That is all I have to add on this evening.
Thank you. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Being that this is summer, we've been all attending a lot of summery events. So, Peter and I had a Victorian tea. Pay attention, Victorian tea. Paying attention. Our Victorian tea.
Talking business with our administrator, Deputy Mayor.
It was quite delightful, wasn't it?
It was wonderful.
So, are you an Earl Grey man, or what are you?
I'm not sure we had tea.
What did you have?
Yes.
That's the question.
We had sandwiches without any crusts.
Cucumber sandwiches?
Yeah.
Because my wife was there. Anyway.
He's not here.
We did attend the Victorian tea at the Lacey, the Historical Society at the Schoolhouse Museum, and I always try and encourage people that if they haven't been to, ever been to the Schoolhouse Museum uh, been to, ever been to the Schoolhouse Museum or the Potter Church, they're the two, uh, two, uh, gems of the township in terms of historical significance, and you should really get out, take a look at them, if you never have been. Um, we've also attended, uh, I just want to give, um, thanks to Alex's Lemonade Stand. They held, held a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago. Um, the, the, those girls have been actually doing that, that, uh, Alex's Lemonade Stand for about six years now, and they continue to do so. The same group of girls, they started when they were about, I don't know, fourth or fifth grade, actually younger than that probably, but they're still continuing to do it, and I wish them the best of luck. We've, uh, attended the grand opening at the Jersey Charm Coffee Shop, which is across from McDonald's, and, uh, it's a new business in town. They sell coffee. I wish them the best of luck. And yesterday, uh, was the, the ribbon demolition, we'll call it.
How about changing of the guard?
Changing of the guard, even though we cut a ribbon, of the, uh, transfer from, uh, Exelon to, called Holtech. Um, I wish them the best of luck, and I think it'll, should work out reasonably well for the township. Um, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Commandant Juliano?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd just like to congratulate what they wound up leaving, um, the Barker family for the, uh, being honored, who it well deserved, uh, saving that gentleman's life, I'm sure, if he got stuck in that car. Um, on another note with that, um, all of the volunteers in this town, uh, everything they do, um, between the fire companies, municipal alliance, food bank, uh, it, it's a thankless job, you know, they don't, they don't look for anything other than, you know, sometimes a little recognition to go their way, which, uh, was nice to do this for the Barkers, and I'm sure we're hoping many more to come, uh, we don't like to see things like this happen, but when they do, recognition is always good. Um, everybody enjoy your summer. Um, I won't be seeing you in August. Uh, I'll be leaving to, uh, go on a nice, well-deserved, uh, vacation to Italy, so I'm gonna be staying there for two to three weeks. So, everybody, see you in September.
Thank you. Uh, Commandant Dykoff?
Yes, thank you. Uh, also, I'd like to congratulate the entire Barker family, because they are a family of volunteers. I've known them for a lot of years, but it was nice to see a father and son, and, and what I noticed when one was working for a fire company, one was local fire company, so I wonder if there's a little, uh, you know...
A little competition?
Friendly competition.
Family competition.
You know, I mean, yeah, but, you know, listen, the Barkers have been, as I said, uh, the entire family has been, uh, great for this township. Uh, Mayor McDonald, myself, uh, and, uh, and Ms. Larray, uh, had met with Congressman Kim, as well as, uh, Senator Connors and Assemblyman Rumpf and their representatives last week to discuss some, some pressing issues in the township, and of course, the, you know, the most pressing issue is the power plant, and items related to that as far as spent fuel and the tax revenue and so on and so forth. I think we had a very productive meeting. Um, hopefully, we can move forward with, um, making the township whole and keeping it whole, uh, as we go through this transition, and as, uh, Deputy Mayor Kennis mentioned, yesterday we had the ribbon cutting of the changing of the guard from Holtech and, and from Exelon to Holtech, and I, it, it was very, very nice to, to hear the, the new owners and operators talk about the transition and see some old faces from Exelon, which is nice to see, and, and the new faces from Holtech. And they said some good things, and hopefully, uh, they come to fruition. It seems like they're a business, and, and a business is there to make money. And, uh, hopefully, they'll look at Lacey Township through the future, and they'll see that we've got a good township in a good county and a good state, and we can make money for them, for us, and for everybody. And that's about all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commandant Cortolo?
Yes, and tackle some of those same sentiments. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the production yesterday at the nuclear plant, um, one thing was really better than the next. I mean, the, the security was as good as the presentation, uh, was as good as the, the planning and the process, um, the speeches, uh, frankly, the promises. Uh, so we're looking really forward, uh, to some of the things that were, that were said yesterday for the future of our township. Uh, we're glad to have you here, Mr. Doswell, as a longtime Lacey resident. She'll probably speak, and you're a conduit of information for the governing body. Uh, but we were afforded everyone's contact numbers yesterday. Um, some of those folks, uh, live close by and others don't, and we're just grateful to have that line of communication. Uh, we've been promised that communication throughout, and so far, in, in my opinion, it's, it's been there, and, um, I, I do feel comfortable about that moving forward. It's a very professional organization, and it was a, a good presentation, as I said. Um, I want to thank the Manofa family one more time for some of their, their kindness, and Holtech, uh, for their kindness as well. We had our largest fireworks spectacular, uh, ever, as leaves onto Recreation. I talked to James, uh, and he had said that there was approximately ten thousand people between all the, the folks on, on the bleachers, in the parking lots, in the schools, on the grounds, uh, easily our largest event and adored by all. Uh, so thank you to everybody that can see this broadcast for coming out and supporting, supporting the town. It's a great American holiday. Uh, I would also like to close with just some comments on, uh, the Wibbit, the Above Water Water Park. Uh, so far, and I think the mayor will have some additional comments, and he's been with the media, uh, so far, so good. Uh, I, I think that it, you will see this, in, in my estimation, become a, a, a revenue-producing item in the next two years. Uh, it was met with robust enthusiasm by kids in summer camps, about a third of the people that visited so far from out of our, our town. Uh, they're, they are paying to use it. It's booking up for, um, different events, so we're excited about it. It's our first entree into tourism. It's a small step, like I've said in public before and in private conversation, there's no reason that just certain municipalities in our county should enjoy tourism. This is a, this is a first step, and I'm excited about it. I'm excited about our one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary a couple of years from now as well. And certainly let the mayor expand on that, and Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Uh, I feel, talk about the Wibbit here. Um, it has been a better-than-forecast success, as we have been averaging over a thousand dollars a day, uh, with that now. Only been two weeks, so we're not jumping through hoops now, but we're getting our knees bent and ready to go here, because if we can get another three or four weeks like this, this is going to be a big home run. And the, what I didn't even think about on this was that the beach badge sales have increased significantly. Uh, we normally sell about four thousand beach badges at five dollars a pop. Um, and Jim is estimating now we'll sell about six thousand beach badges. So, all this money comes back into the Recreation Department. It helps us provide better services, better things for all, all of us, uh, in Lacey Township. Um, so keep it up. Uh, my wife is poking me, telling me I'm not as, my, my ego has to come down, because unfortunately, I have been on every Philadelphia TV station, so, uh, she tells me I'm not that good, so anyhow. All right. Uh, meeting with Congressman Kim, as Mr. Dykoff had mentioned, uh, I thought was a very good meeting. Um, he's going to help us. Uh, one of the things we're trying to do, uh, and he's gonna help us with is get meetings with Senator Booker and Senator Menendez, uh, about this, uh, the storage of the dry fuel, the spent fuel rods, uh, and getting compensation for that. One of the things is this town never agreed to keep those here for the life of, under the nineteen-eighty-five Nuclear Spent Fuel Act. Uh, they are the property of the United States Government, and hence, if they're gonna keep them here, we should be reimbursed for, for that. If they wanna move them, so be it, but let's get, let's, let's do one thing or the other. Um, yesterday was a great day. Uh, our meeting with Holtech, the ribbon cutting, uh, and as the mayor, I got to sit next to Dr. Singh, who is just a fabulous individual. And in talking to him, uh, along the way, probably had about a thirty-minute meeting with him in different spots and talking to him, I think the future of Lacey Township and that piece of property down there is much, much brighter than it has been in a long time. Uh, he has indicated what he's going to do. Uh, and as I have said to everybody who talks to me, whenever I meet with the Holtech people, I ask that, that plant in Camden be moved to Lacey Township. Uh, Mr. Dr. Singh has a deal going on right now, uh, and unfortunately, fortunately for Lacey Township, that Camden plant can only produce about two nuclear, small nuclear reactors a year, and if he gets this deal, he's gonna need a lot more in a hurry. And he has indicated that's where he'll come to Lacey with that, and if it's any indication of what's out in Camden, that's three hundred jobs at some very high rates. So that's a very, very good thing. Um, and I do want to clarify something. I asked Jeff Doswell to come today, and Jeff, if you wanted to chime in here on this, this is about the asbestos exemption, because we got it wrong. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit about this, because it was a big debate the last time. Um, what Holtech has done is they've applied for an exemption for asbestos abatement down at the power plant. And the reason for that is, under the decommissioning fund, they're not allowed to use it for asbestos abatement. So they're applying for an exemption to use the decommissioning fund money for the asbestos abate. It's not to, they don't wanna pay for it, or go to the federal government for more money. They need to get it, the NRC's gonna say yes to bring it inside the decommissioning fund, so that, that was where we got it wrong. Um, and I do want to talk about something else, and I'll, I'll wrap up here shortly, is, what people don't realize, and it, it occurred to me, it didn't occur to me, somebody mentioned it, in that, uh, decommissioning fund, and they've drawn down on it, it's a little over eight hundred million dollars, eight hundred and fifty million, give or take. But that's for one reactor. These other plants have basically the same amount of money, but for two reactors. So if you were to, if you were to, to scale them, you would find out that the Lacey decommissioning fund throughout the country, by far, is the most funded decommissioning fund out there. And so people who are worried about there's not gonna be enough money and this, that, and everything else like that, put your mind to rest. There's plenty of money inside of that. Um, the other thing, and I, I wanna congratulate Pete on this, was the Estate Card. We got a, Veronica got a phone call from the Estate Card people wanting to know what, what are we doing to, uh, market this, because we're one of the best in the country. They've never seen it, and all we did was, according to Veronica, was, was do what they asked us to do. Put it out. We did some things in the water bills and stuff like that, back into the MUA on that, and it's unbelievable. We're, we're, we're way ahead of everybody on this, so that, that's, that's a good thing. Um, and I think that's all I have. Uh, with that, I'll open it up to, let me call up Jeff Doswell. Jeff, will you just point to the mic for a second while I got you here? Okay, was I correct on how that decommissioning?
You were very correct. So basically, the decommissioning fund is set aside, and it's made for decommissioning nuclear or radioactive waste.
Okay.
In order to utilize that fund for ground restoration, environmental restoration, or non-nuclear waste, you have to petition the NRC and prove that you have enough money to handle the nuclear fuel, handle the waste, and handle the environmental aspects of it to pay come, to have it come from the fund. So this, because that, you were exactly on target.
All right. And then there was another issue, something about the Tennessee Valley Association, and you guys got suspended, and it was, can you, I, I, I got the story. It's very convoluted, so if you can...
It is. It's a very convoluted story.
If you can, tell us a little bit about that, that would, and straighten us out on that, that would be great.
Mayor, could I just have a check for one?
Sure.
I do apologize.
Sure.
Mr. Doswell, could you, could you tell the folks at home your, your title, so that the folks that may not know, know where you, you rank at the plant?
I'm Jeff Doswell. Um, I was the plant manager, decommissioning manager and director at Oyster Creek. I am now the vice president of Oyster Creek, and I will be there to recommission.
Thank you.
All right, so explain this Tennessee Valley Association thing.
So, there's a, a New Jersey statue that talks about growing New Jersey, and that induced Holtech and Dr. Singh to build a facility in Camden. He built a facility for three hundred million dollars, and he applied for a tax credit from the state of New Jersey based on it. That's tax credit was granted for two hundred and sixty million dollars. An application for that tax credit, it asked if you were debarred from any facility or federal government or state agency, or working with any state agency. In the application, they've marked down no, they were not. It was an oversight. They were actually debarred in the Tennessee Valley of all, TBA. That department was for sixty days and was based on an assessment that they were doing. After they did that assessment, everything was cleared, and a few months later, they formed a three hundred million dollar contract with TBA. And now Holtech is working with TBA. So that department was based on TBA doing the assessment or the government doing the assessment.
Okay. Well, there's also been some about Holtech is an LLC, and all of that. Exelon is also...
That's right.
...an LLC. So the same rules would apply to both, both companies.
That's right. There is no difference.
Anybody else got questions for?
Me, Ashford.
You're, you're welcome. I just want to say that you talked about old faces and new faces. Well, this is an old face. That old face has been there for thirty-seven years, and will be there and continue to be there. There's two hundred and four people at Oyster Creek that work there from Exelon and have transferred overs, um, basically CDI, Holtech. There are people that live in the neighborhoods. They're good neighbors, and they continue to work, and we will continue to work to be good neighbors at this.
And let me just say one thing, I, at this meeting yesterday, how, how did Exelon absorb a hundred and seventy employees?
That's right.
From that power plant into different positions throughout their company, I guess on the East Coast, or if somebody wanted to move, wherever they, wherever they could get to.
Pennsylvania, New York, Chicago.
Right. So, they, they took care of the employees.
They did. They did.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Jack.
Any, any other comments? To me, it was up to the public. The public, any comments? State your name and address for record, please.
Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach, Fast and Near Seagulls. Um, first, first I want to talk about something that has been bothering me for a while in town, and it has to do with committees and boards, okay? Um, of which you are a board, you are a committee. Now, you're all elected officials. If, what happens if somebody is negligent as a committee person who was elected in the way of attendance? They don't show up. They don't partake in giving their ideas. They don't partake in hearing the empathy of the public. They don't partake in, in, in listening to people complain, or, you know, they just aren't part of the group.
We understand what you're saying.
Let me turn this over to me, it's more of a legal question than anything else.
There's a vacancy law that applies, so there's a responsibility to be here a certain amount of time. There is a little bit of leniency. Obviously, if somebody has a, a medical condition or something like that, you can provide some leniency. But yes, they are responsible for being here more often than not, and if they are not, then they can be removed from their position.
Okay, and they would be removed by the vote of the other committee people?
Yes.
Or, or is there a higher entity?
No.
Okay. Does this apply to all the boards and committees in town, or only to elected officials?
Statutorily, it's only really to elected officials. However, the governing body does, you know, receive reports from other committees and boards and so forth, and then it is discussed, and some, I believe, over the years happen.
The other boards also do have policies and procedures related to the Open Public Meetings Act and people's attendance.
There's a monitoring of attendance that goes on?
Yes, absolutely, and it's, and it's recognized, um, at, in the minutes, and roll call is done at the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, or Board of Health, and it is recognized.
And those are the major boards. It's more applicable to the major boards, the smaller committees and so forth. It is more monitored up here.
We, we had one this year. Nobody told us. He hadn't to move out of state. And I found out about it, called him. I said, "I need your letter of resignation." He said, "Fine." He faxed it in. It was no problem.
Yeah, I was just curious. I know that unless you're an elected official, you serve at the pleasure of the, of the committee, correct?
There's terms.
There's terms of office.
There's terms. I mean, there's a holdover status too, so technically, I guess you could argue that they, they do, uh, represent, you know, based at the leader of the, uh, the governing body. However, there are technically limits for...
Okay, and this, this particular, I'm just, I'm an HR guy, old HR guy, and I used to reward the local high school for the best attendance. Give a scholarship every year, okay? And I thought, you know, there's many, many boards on many townships, uh, you know, and I've been involved in a couple other towns, um, where people take positions to gain notoriety for political advancement, for whatever personal reasons they had. Now, if someone was to do that in this township, of which this is my primary residence, I'm wondering what could be done to re, either remove that person or have some kind of a...
Well, there's mechanisms...
That are, you're telling me now, there's mechanisms.
Understand, and if the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, they serve, uh, for a term length, so it's really not a whole lot we can do, unless they're absent. Unless they're absent, there's not a whole lot.
And that would show in the minutes.
If they're there, if they're there filling their role, they have the right to disagree with other board members. I mean, that's, that's what America's all about.
Right, I understand.
So the only way we could get rid of them at that certain time is if they're turned or not, and we have done that in certain cases.
Two thousand and thirteen, the Open Public Meetings Act was changed to reflect everything you're speaking about.
Okay, I, I didn't know that, and that's why I wanted to ask the question. Um, and it brings to mind that, um, you know, I go to the Board of Education meetings a lot when I'm in town, and I know that to find people to serve on that board, especially in the recent years, it's been very, very tough, because there's been a lot of issues that have come up, that are hot, hot topics and hot-button issues having to do with money, having to do with, uh, moral values, having to do with, you know, union negotiations. These are all hot-button topics, and to find people to serve could be an issue. And, and if we don't have enough people that come out to serve, like yourselves, I see you, you folks are here all the time, so I have no complaints about what happens with Lacey Township Committee, but I do have concerns about other boards and committees in town, and that's why I'm bringing up the issue. They have to have a quorum to be able to do things.
Right.
And if they can't find enough people to have a quorum to do things, that can be a real problem, not only for me as a resident, but you as residents, okay? And that reflects on the town as a whole. Okay, so I, I was wondering if, if there were, there's a lot of empty seats occasionally at the Board of Education when I go to the meetings, and I don't know why, but if there is something that could be done, I intend to bring that forward, and I wanted to bring it forward to you so that you're not blindsided, you know?
I know. You do need to address that with the school board as to what their rules and regulations are.
And I intend to do that.
The Open Public Mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The Open Public Meetings Act does apply to them, so...
Okay, 'cause they're elected officials.
Right.
They have, they can have excuse. Okay. Um, Mr., can I address Mr. Dykoff?
Sure.
Mark, what happened with the meeting with Kim? Anything other than, other than what with Holtech? Was there any other issues brought up on Lacey?
What we discussed was the spent fuel. That was the major question at the meeting, was the spent fuel. And, and he, he, he agreed to help us. There have been, there has been proposed legislation in the past. One in particular was the, um, Straining Nuclear Waste Act of two thousand seventeen, whereas municipalities like Lacey Township, which have shut down power plants, would receive some monetary reimbursement for, for storing of fuel. So it fell by the wayside, but there were some other proposed issues. So he, he had promised us he was gonna go back and, and look at that. Um, Senator Connors was, was very helpful and, and assured us that possibly we'd be able to do something as far as rezoning, so, you know, but it was broad, you know, broad strokes. And, uh, but it was nice to have a meeting with him. Um, he was agreeable with us, and, and he was gonna work towards meeting or, uh, setting up meetings with Senators Booker and Menendez.
Yeah, it was the first time we had met him.
Yeah.
We, we had never met him before, so it was kind of more introductory. Uh, we talked about one of the bills that his predecessor had pushed through, which was, uh, to get reimbursement for spent fuel rods, and, and the way it read when it came out of the House was the township, the municipality, we get the money. When we got to the Senate, they have changed it to where the company gets the money, so we brought that up. But here's the problem with that. Since the Senate changed it, you either gotta go back, it's gotta go back to conference, or it's gotta go back through the whole process. So we're, we're gonna keep an eye. He's supposed to get some information on that and talk to us about this. This is some of the things that we want to talk to, obviously, Senator Booker, Senator Menendez about, so. I thought it was a great meeting.
Good. Uh, did, did they, did they, um, happen to bring up anything about the pending lawsuit against Holtech in New Mexico?
No.
And the Yucca Mountain thing, and the land that they bought around it, and promises made?
I don't think there's a lawsuit yet. The, the governor of New Mexico and the, the head of the Department of Land Use in, in New Mexico have written letters, I believe, to the NRC that they really don't want that interim storage in New Mexico. I did talk to Dr. Singh about that a little bit yesterday. Um, his comment to me was, "It's all political, and then, and it'll probably be resolved." So, I, I gotta tell you, I found him to be a very honest, when guy, uh, very straightforward, when there was a, when I brought up something, he said, "I, we know about that." Uh, one of the problems we did have, uh, about three months ago, we had a meeting, and I kind of said, "We're not getting enough communications from Holtech." We started getting some, okay? A little bit more than we got. He has indicated now that he's going to be sending us, I don't wanna say top-secret, uh, information, but management-level memos that, that pertain to, um, pertain to, uh, Hol, uh, Oyster Creek. We will be getting what we can get, obviously. Some of this stuff is proprietary. So they're gonna have to filter that. And I, you think about that, all the memos that go back and forth in that company, and then we're gonna be getting some of this stuff. Somebody's gotta filter that, so it's an expense on their end. So I was very ha, happy for that.
Well, that's good, that it, they've opened up some communications with the Township Committee. Has the NRC reconsidered opening up any further communications with the public in reference to, to what happens? Because I don't think the NRC held a public meeting in the county, have they?
No, no.
Now, so they're really...
Well, they, 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 yes.
Yes.
I would say yes.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah, they had. At our community hall for several hours.
What was the Tom's over the other night? Was it the D E P?
It was very well attended. It was D E P.
That was, Tom's over the other night. Was that the D E P or the NRC?
I think it was D.
D E P.
D E P?
D E P and the state police.
The NRC was in our town.
Yes, you're correct.
At Community Hall.
We had a town hall meeting down there. I want to say, maybe a year, year and a half ago, there was maybe sixty people show up.
Yeah.
I know, you may have been in Florida, I don't know.
I've probably been some state somewhere, you know.
Or the Virgin Islands.
Yeah, wherever.
Just an island for sailing.
And they explained the process, and so forth like that, so, you know.
I was just wondering if the NRC was open to any direct input in reference to Holteck and the change, or keeping the public appraised, or only using you as the communicators? That's all I was wondering.
You know, we don't get a whole lot of communication from the NRC about this. I mean, Lauren was pulling out her hair, we tried to do some...
Jeff, he talks to them once a week.
If I can. We have scheduled a state level provision forum meeting, and this meeting is going to be September. So public meetings will be open to the public. They'll provide you all the information that you want, on what decommissioning is, what's going on at Oyster Creek, all our plans, our progress to date, we'll have all that. The NRC is also going to have a public meeting in September at that time to talk about the decommissioning process. So yes, they will.
Well, that's what I was looking for, and if it's going to happen, that's good news.
I'm sorry, my question is, where is the NRC hearing? At the same location, or is it in Maryland?
Same location.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that brought up another thing in reference to the NRC's communication, your communication in reference to Oyster Creek. I happened to be at the Ocean County Mall the other day, and I walked into the county annex there. And I asked a very simple question. I said, do you have a copy of the evacuation plan from Oyster Creek? And now that it's been decommissioned, do you have an updated evacuation plan? And the answer I got from the person in charge at the annex was, huh? What are you talking about? Well, that got me to thinking, and you know how dangerous that could be. Okay? If Oyster Creek is closed, and is no longer a threat to the radioactivity in our evacuation plan, that's good. But I'm a Sandy refugee, and Mother Nature is not. So my question to this board, or to this committee, is although there may not be an evacuation plan posted with the county that's available to the public, storms happen.
But we still have evacuation plans for storms. Oyster Creek is a totally separate and distinct situation. We do still have evacuation plans depending on the severity of a storm, and what type of storms it is. And those are updated, those plans are updated when need be, especially if new roads are put in, or we have to update our plan every five years as required by the Office of Emergency Management through the state police.
Okay. That's great. But again, if I was to go and seek...
There's no pamphlet that's put out for a basic storm of emergency evacuation, because there's no set route, depending on what the storm is. So you can't, you know...
You've got to go west, Tommy.
Not, that's the thing, what if something's coming from the west, you know, then you might have to go north or south.
If you'll remember correctly, when Sandy had, Mr. Dykoff was the mayor, and he got on the phone, we all got the phone call about Sandy and so forth like that. We have an emergency management team here, and whenever there's a big storm, whether it's a snowstorm, or hurricanes coming, this room is filled with probably fifty people, and the plans, going over the plans, the evacuation routes, and things like that to get people out, depending on the storm and the size of the storm. So to give one plan...
Okay.
Would not know one overall jam. No, because you know what? You may have that, and you go the wrong way, and all of a sudden, we got a real problem. Because you...
Communicated at the time of the event.
Exactly.
And Tony, also, we do have, and we have used, depending on the situation...
Thank you.
...or snow, a reverse nine-one-one. That goes out to everyone. That message is vetted very carefully through chief of police and OEM, and whoever's, the voice that delivers it doesn't really, isn't consequential. It's the meaning and the message that goes through the phone. So our residents are never left out in the cold.
Well, I understand that, and Mark will tell you, I had conversation with him in Sunrise Beach, and we took some action upon recommendation. That was good things to do, but you never prepare enough. You know what I mean? And that's my only concern, why I bring this forward.
You're absolutely, there's only so much that we can do. There's really only so much as a town we can do.
Is that mentioned in the calendar that's given out?
That's the recycling calendar.
I wonder, there's a lot of information.
Yeah, I don't believe it's in the, there might be a page on the police there, and it might talk about that.
I can tell you this, Tony, if there's a storm, we're going to put it on our Facebook, we're going to put it on our webpage. We'll get it out to the people in this town.
There may just be something, you know, put it on the calendar, a little blurb about, you will be notified by these methods, or something like that.
That's one point. That's a point.
Mr. Curto has us further.
Yeah, I'm the employee of the county health department. One of our busy parts of that department is disaster preparedness. I know those folks really well. They have a variety of electronic platforms and brochures. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go down to Marnigat, that's where they're primarily located. I'll get that information, I'll bring it back here by Monday at the latest, probably tomorrow night, and we'll have it here for the residents. Anybody that wants to come in...
That's great.
...or if we can duplicate any of the information, send it out with any...
Or something, you know, generic information on a county level at the annex available for people to look at, you know, something like that. Just the more you can put out, the better off.
We can talk to freeholders then.
You know, speaking of safety, okay?
I have it.
Speaking of safety, we're taking some great steps at the board of education by limiting access to the schools. We're going to single entryways, and we're going through metal detectors, and things like that, which is all great stuff. You hold court in this room, do you not?
Yes.
Yep.
We have metal detectors here too. We have two police officers that sit outside, they stand outside, right, with their guns. They get patted down, they're wireless, everything, just like you would go through in the airplane, they got to go through that.
I've seen it at other municipal buildings, that, you know, it happens, but not only for court. It happens for, you know, board of adjustment meetings, it happens for, some of them get pretty ratty.
There's, we have a panic button.
I have a panic button to your back here.
Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to bring that up, and in reference to that, who owns the weapons that the school resource officers carry? Is that township weapons, or are they person weapons?
Police service.
We provide the weapons to our employees.
Okay. I brought this up before, and I just wanted to bring it up again, and, you know, it would be something that Chief DeBella would really have to look at. But if I'm an eighteen-year-old boy, and I'm six foot four and two hundred and sixty pounds, and some resource officer comes up to me, I'm taking his gun away.
Doesn't carry it with him, in the premises.
They're not armed in the premises, right?
So they're not armed inside?
They're not allowed to be, by law.
Not allowed, not allowed, by law. So you're not taking it away from them. You're going to have to wrestle it. You know, quite frankly, it's a man versus a boy. Even if he's that big, man's got, usually going to have more...
No, I understand. I thought they were armed, if they were on property, they were armed.
No.
And I was going to bring up the subject of smart weapons again. Only that person can use that gun. And if we own them, you know, then we would be responsible to be the armor to make sure they're charged, or whatever. What else was there? Evacuation? There was an article, and there was in reference to helping ICE in local towns do their jobs in the New Jersey Attorney General's Directive.
Right.
And I was wondering if you have re-looked at your position in reference to that in Lacy Township?
You sent a letter up to the Attorney General asking for clarification on that, because right now, our chief of police there doesn't know what to do, and how to be handled. Still waiting for a letter back. And if you saw the Asbury Park Press, the Ocean County Freeholders are now suing the Attorney General of New Jersey.
That I saw today.
We have it on our agenda to discuss whether we're going to help them with that, or take a position on that happening executive session. So you've got to give some of the money.
Okay, just trying to keep you on your toes.
We're there, we're there.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Pete, for reminding me of that.
Regina Senza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. May I ask Mr. Giuliano about the LMUA meeting? Was it last night, or the last week?
Last night.
It was last night?
It was Wednesday night, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't able to go. Was anything interesting?
Neither was I.
Oh, you didn't go? All right, I guess, I hope they had a...
I had to take my favorite mother-in-law to see the Dupree's. I have to tell you, it was a little bit more important.
No question about that.
Okay. And Mr. Kennis, were you by any chance at the planning board meeting Monday night? Anything interesting?
No.
Okay, because I missed that too, sorry.
You did, you're slipping.
What are you trying to do? Have a life? Are you trying to have a life?
I am still physically exhausted, I have no idea.
Mr. Senza, are you going to ask me about the health department meeting?
No.
If you left out...
Man, don't you discriminate against...
Twenty-four hours ago, I was...
What I will say though now is that there are four seats officially open at the county clerk's office this November fifth for the Lacy Board of Education. There is one two-year seat to replace Mr. Frank Borvath, who moved out of the district. There are three three-year seats available every third year. I have the petitions. They are due to the county clerk by Monday, July twenty-ninth. So far, from what I've heard, no candidates have signed up. It's the thankless volunteer job that nobody wants. I suggest bringing these petitions in by Friday, July twenty-sixth, instead of July twenty-ninth, in case there's something wrong with it, you have a chance to make a correction or a change. The qualifications are very simple. You have to be over eighteen, you have to be able to read, write, and speak English, you have to be a resident of the district for one year and a registered voter. The qualifications to be a school board member are very easy, almost everyone qualifies, so please, I'd like to ask the public to please think about applying for a seat on the school board. It's not a difficult thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bender.
Barry Bender, Hestark Bay Avenue.